Amazing how everything got so quiet so quick. We've got another minute to wait. Well, good morning. Welcome to the March 4th meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Would you please stand with me and salute the flag of our country and stand for a moment of silence? Ready? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item this morning is a presentation to a longtime employee of the county. And Mr. Lenders, if you would meet me on the, I guess, your side of the red and black.
That's Homeland Security.
Well, I've known Don for several years, and it gives me great pleasure to recognize him this morning. And Sheriff, can we have you come up here as well? I think you've probably known Don a little bit longer than I have. Well, it gives me great pleasure. Don started working for the Sheriff's Department in April of 1972. And something that I've always enjoyed about Don is the picture he carries in his front pocket of his first wife. And he makes a point to tell everyone that he carries a picture of his first wife in his front pocket. And I'd like her to stand. Judy. So let's recognize Judy. And I think that round of applause is for putting up with Don here for all the many years of his fine service that he dedicated and gave to the county and the Sheriff's Department. So on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, Don, we want to present to you a plaque. And I know that you probably have saved a spot on your wall-
Yes, I do.
-for this thing for many years now.
Yes, correct.
The time, and I expected it to say Donald K., but it says Donald.
Well, you know, the inmates can't spell too good.
But the time you put in is appreciated. I know that having worked with you for the last several years with the City Vice Chair and the City Council Planning Commission, and now as you being a City Council member and on the Board of Supervisors, I know the level of dedication that you have to your service to the community, to the service that you put in with the Sheriff's Department. And on behalf of the Board and the Sheriff, congratulations on your retirement. And I hope that when you do buy your motor home, it is trouble-free and gas-efficient.
Thank you.
It's hard for me to believe that one politician gave up the mic to another one because he knows it'll take about 30 minutes to say thank you to the many folks that I've worked with. I want to thank the Sheriff for giving me the opportunity to serve with him, and Bob Wiley as well for affording me the many opportunities that I've had over my career. You know, none of that would have been possible, and like Phil said, I carry a picture of my first wife in my pocket, and everybody says, "How many wives you had?" You know, my pat answer is, "I only had one." That's something I'm real proud of, and I like to share that with people because this year will be 35 years that we've been married. And I don't think that that's... To me, that's a big accomplishment, and I'm real proud of my wife for sticking with us all those years. Me and the five dogs, we're very happy in our new motor home if we ever get it. So my advice to the rest of you is, work is highly overrated. Take advantage of the opportunity and retire. We have an excellent retirement system. So with that, I'd like to thank Phil and the rest of the Board. Appreciate it very much.
We're going to leave you to your meeting.
Congratulations, Don. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you, Don. Yeah, thanks, Don.
I think he left expecting a roast. I don't see our next presenter here, so we are going to move to item number three.
He's got a messenger from-
He's coming in right now.
Walking... Okay, well, we'll not do that, Mr. Spata. I'm sorry. It gives me great pleasure this morning to introduce a gentleman in blue, really in Colonel Orion is here to make a presentation to our District Attorney, Phil Klein, in his support of the county's policy. And also, Phil was very involved in setting this policy that we allow our folks at our military reserve to go out and serve their country and maintain their normal level of county pay while they're out in the service of their country. We have several individuals that are doing that. So at this time, I would like to invite Colonel Orion to come to the podium as well as Mr. Klein.
Board of Supervisors and all the guests here, I'd like to thank you for letting me come to present this. I'm Colonel Ryan Orion, the 144th Fighter Wing Vice Commander. We're based in Fresno, and we're responsible for the defense of the West Coast of the United States. We have aircraft on alert 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, protecting against a 911 event or any aircraft entering our air defense identification zone that are unknown. It's a big mission, and not only do we do that, we also deploy overseas. We've gone twice to Iraq, and we've sent people over to Afghanistan and Iraq just recently. So we have people over all the time. I want to thank Sergeant Marty for his dedication. He... Everybody does their part. He's fairly legal up there. He helps us with the legal issues that go on with the base. And I want to thank Philip Klein for allowing him to participate, you know, supporting him in his job up there. It's a big deal to have employers onboard. Every year, we get two or three problems with employers that try to give the guard employees a hard time for doing their service to their country. And obviously, this is not the case. Phil has been very supportive of Marty. And in fact, he's, on his own initiative, sent bulletproof vests over to Iraq to help folks out there who need it. So he's really been a big supporter of the military. And Philip, I'd like you to present this award. It says, "The National Committee for Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve recognizes Philip J. Klein, Tulare County District Attorney, as a patriotic employer for contributing to national security and protecting liberty and freedom by supporting employee participation in America's National Guard and Reserve Force." Thank you.
If I could say a word for just a minute-
Please.
My name is Jack Davidson. I'm the State Vice Chair for Employer Support of Guard and Reserve out of Department of Defense. And this is one of our awards. Another special thing is, in the military, as a special tribute between comrades in arms, we have a coin that is presented. This goes back to 1917. It's an Air Force tradition, and I would like to present you with one of our coins.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say that I do appreciate the award, and I do want to also thank the Board of Supervisors and the other department heads for all the support that they give for people in the military. And it's only on your behalf and their behalf that I would accept this kind of award. Don Gallion and I both served in the military during the Vietnam War. And so we remember how some of those folks were treated. And I know that this board, and I know that the other department heads as well as us, are committed to making sure that our people in arms are supported here, wherever they may serve, whether it's in the nation or overseas. So I thank you, Board of Supervisors.
Board members, you'd like to comment?
Well, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just... Gentlemen, thank you for coming and making this presentation today. We very much appreciate that, and we appreciate our men and women and who serve our country. I remember when we brought this policy forward to the Board of Supervisors about providing this level of support from our funds. And it was a unanimous decision. There's always been great support for this, and I don't think any of us knew it was going to go on as long as it has. But, you know, the war on terror is a different kind of war, and it does take... It may go on for generations. And I'm just grateful our county has stepped up and been supportive of this, and I think you will see the Board continue to do that in the future. So thank you again for coming.
I'd like to thank the Air Force for coming in today. And I'd like to thank District Attorney Phil Klein for his efforts leading the charge on this. And I'm very proud to be a participant of supporting our men and women in the armed forces. So thank you very much.
And I'd also like to thank you, Phil, and the Air Force for coming down today. I spent six years in the Guard, and I know what it is getting off the weekends, the two weeks in the summer. So I know the program. So good program. Thanks so much for all you guys have done.
Thank you. And we'll let you get back to defending our side of the country. Thank you. Okay, before we move on to item number three, I would like to... I know you've already noticed, Supervisor Conway is absent this morning, attending a conference on our behalf. And so we wish her well in her travels. So with that, we will move to item number three. Now, Mr. Spata, you can jump up. I'll introduce Mr. Gene Russo, our C O, who will introduce the item.
Thank you, Chairman Cox. Senior State County Administrative Officer. It's my pleasure to introduce the mid-year budget report for this board. Before I start, I'd like to thank staff of my office, Kristen Bennett, Mike Spata, Martin Meyer, Paul, Dana, Lynn, and the departments for all your help, along with the Auditor's Office for your continued support. And now I'll turn it over to Mike Spata.
Thank you, Mr. Rousseau. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, ladies and gentlemen. The presentation today essentially-
Pull the mic around for him. There you go.
Can you hear me now? Better. All right, good. Let me start again.
And you have an entourage behind you as well.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, ladies and gentlemen. This morning, it is the pleasure of the County Administrative Office to present the mid-year budget report for fiscal year 2007, 2008. Essentially, our discussion today will embrace five specific topics. First, we will deal with the mid-year budget for fiscal year 2007, 2008. Then we will move on to the fiscal outlook for fiscal year 2008, 2009, which time Mr. Rousseau and I will have some comments involving that item. Then we will turn to the state budget impacts. Again, Mr. Rousseau and I will address that subject. Then I will move on to the budget development schedule and conclude with three specific recommendations. All right, before we get into specifics, I'd like to begin with some very broader standard principles involving budgeting. To begin with, the general fund is Tulare County's primary operating budget. The general fund must balance in that the appropriations approved by your board must equal revenues. Net county cost is the difference or the gap between departmental appropriations and departmental revenues. The bottom line is that net county cost dollars come from carryover fund balance and general county revenues. Carryover fund balance is the result of any unexpended departmental appropriations following the adopted budget and any salary savings. The general county revenues, for example, we're all familiar with them. They constitute property taxes, sales taxes, Prop 172 sales taxes, and of course, Williamson Act, subvented dollars. There are other items, but those are some major items. All right, turning now to our mid-year review. As a result of the adopted budget by your board, there were revenues of $599 million that were estimated. As of mid-year 12/31/07, the revenues received by the county were $212,774,567. To give you a little bit of context, if I can direct your attention to the third column to the right, you will see that for this mid-year, '07, '08, as of December 31st, $213 million in revenues were received by the county out of a possible $600 million. That represents 35%. To give you some context of the prior fiscal year, '06, '07, the county received 38%, although that was the same amount of revenue, $213 million, compared to $559 estimated revenue last fiscal year. Then the fiscal year prior to that, '05, '06, at mid-year, 42% of revenues were received by the county, and that was $208 million out of $497 million. So compared to prior years, the county is roughly the same, roughly equivalent to the revenues received, and we see no negative effect as a result of the economic slowdown that may have resulted in a percentage rate decline, but not really in an overall actual receipt of revenues. Turning now to expenditures. Expenditures obligated or spent as of 12/31/07 were 44% of the adopted budget. More specifically, as of 12/31/07, $273 million in revenues... I'm sorry, in dollars were spent out of an adopted budget of $624 million. Again, to give you some context, looking at this bar graph to the extreme right, we see that for this fiscal year, $273 million were spent out of $625 million, which represents 44% of the appropriations spent. Again, to give you some context, last fiscal year, '06, '07, as of mid-year, 43% of expenditures were obligated or spent. And for fiscal year '05, '06, the expenditure rate was 48%. So we see a decline in the expenditure rate. But again, this is roughly equivalent to two prior years, so there are no aberrations with regard to the expenditure rate. Perhaps the most important result or observation that has been made as a result of reviewing all the departmental reports that had been provided, plus the C O's independent analysis, the general result is that all general fund agencies and departments project finishing at or under the adopted budget for fiscal year 2007, 2008, except the Health and Human Services Agency. We will get into that a little bit more, but the primary reason is that Health and Human Services Agency is facing a realignment shortfall, and they're also observing no growth in realignment funding. Before Mr. Rousseau delves into, or as I should say, before I will delve into the mid-year impacts of the state budget, I wanted to give you a little bit of general context in terms of where's the economy heading? And if we see where the economy is heading, that may portend for us where our revenue picture may be headed in the forthcoming budget year as well as in out years. Let's take the housing market crisis. We're all familiar with the subprime market crisis in that there has been a tremendous amount of foreclosures in the subprime area. There's been a significant decline in housing prices, and home sales and resales are also down. This is impacting the construction and remodeling activities, which in turn has an effect negatively on the capital gains taxes, on the sales taxes, and on the property taxes. Turning now to the credit market meltdown. This essentially relates to how much liquidity there is in the credit market, which is important for business expansion and growth. Well, as a result of the subprime impacts, the banks are reticent to lend even to credit-worthy entities, and consequently, this is having a negative effect on the expansion activities of business. If business doesn't expand, then income receipts are not going to increase, which is also going to have a negative economic effect in the future. Now taking a look at the macroeconomic factors. Basically, there are four that we look at: growth, or the obverse recession, inflation, interest rates, and unemployment. In terms of growth, as we all know, we are entering a period of sluggish growth. We are not formally in a recession. We don't have two or more negative periods of growth of GDP, but based upon certain analyses, we may be headed for a recession, although the federal government and the Fed is trying to avert a recession through the stimulus packages recently been adopted. So growth is something that we look at because if we see a downturn in growth, that's going to have a negative effect on business, which is going to have a negative effect on profitability, taxes, so on down the line. Turning now to inflation. Inflation is at 4.5%, and we have to take a careful look at food and energy prices because that's the cost that the consumer is going to suffer. That will affect consumer spending, which is probably the most important aspect keeping this economy going right now, consumer spending. And if inflation is going to increase both in terms of consumer pricing and energy pricing, they're going to turn towards those basic necessities as opposed to other expenses which can have a negative effect on the economy. Interest rates, as a result of the credit market crisis, the Fed has seen fit to continuing to decline its discount rate and its Fed's fund rate to try to stimulate demand, to try to get some more funds out there for borrowing by businesses and consumers. So that factor is good. With regard to unemployment, unemployment has not significantly declined, and that's a good fact in that if unemployment doesn't decline, then consumer spending will remain constant, if not increase, which will continue to prevent the economy from going into a recession. So with that general background, we're going to turn to the state budget impacts for the current year, '07, '08, and for the next fiscal year, '08, '09. There are four general categories that relate to the Governor's proposed budget in January of '08. It's administration of justice, government finance and operations, health and human services, and transportation land use. I'm going to go through each one of these now with regard to its effect on mid-year, and then Mr. Rousseau will take it in terms of the effects for next fiscal year. With regard to the first category, administration of justice, what we've been able to glean from the budget documents prepared by the Governor is that there is a deferral of new judgeships to Tulare County that could have an effect in terms of the county not having to appropriate approximately $911,000. We get that figure because last fiscal year, when two new judgeships were approved for the Superior Court, we appropriated approximately $911,000 for attorneys for the district attorney, attorneys for the public defender, legal assistants, and appropriation officers associated with each judge. So we figure if two judges were approved for this fiscal year, this fiscal year, the county would be saving about $911,000 if the judge does not actually allow those judges to be put in the budget. Turning now to government finance and operation, we've gleaned that there is a possible deferral of SB 90 mandate payments in the amount of $347,000. Moving on to health and human services, the effect of the Governor's budget is that as a result of a deferral, a reduction of payments, and a cut in programs in health, mental health, developmental services, and human services, there'll be a loss of approximately $1.4 million. Turning now to transportation, we see that for this fiscal year, the Governor proposes a deferral of gas tax payments. However, county roads would try to stem that possible interruption in funding to borrow approximately $2 million from the solid waste fund. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Rousseau.
Thank you, Mr. Spata. This slide here talks about the impacts to next year's budget to our departments that we've been able to determine from reviewing the Governor's proposed budget for '08, '09. As you can see, with the 10% cut across the board, our public safety departments, the Sheriff, probation, and District Attorney is projecting a potential loss of $1.65 million. As, like Mike said, relative to '07, '08, for '08, '09, they will be deferring new judgeships, which is a good thing. They are proposing to deny or delay perhaps the reimbursement for the presidential election that we just went through. Information that we've determined and learned from CSAC is that will probably be put back in, and then they may revise or during negotiations with the legislature, but that will be delayed of sorts, along with other multiple delays that we'll go into in a little bit later. Also, they are proposing, the state is proposing to defer estimated SB 90 mandate payments of approximately $300,000 next year. And this is like deja vu two years ago when we seemed to be picking on the Social Services Department, but they are... They've been impacted significantly by the Governor's proposed budget. 10% across-the-board cuts along with realignment revenues being flat or at best not growing is really put them in a difficult position. We've been... The County Administrative Office has been working closely with them to determine how we can address this issue, but what we're looking at is projected loss or reduction in funding at $1.4 million. Mike, if you can go to the next slide, and then I'll come back to the slide. One after this. Okay. The other way. Number 17? Okay. And other items that were noted in next year's budget was a reduction of Prop 1B funding for local maintenance of $3 million, but that should be... I think our roads department should be in okay shape with the augmentation of 1B funding this year. They should probably have money left over, so it shouldn't be a big deal. What is an area of concern is a 10% cut in the Williamson Act, in the Super Williamson Act. That will impact the county to approximately $350,000. And I guess it could have been worse. We expected worse. So 10% cut is something that we- we can live with. And they're also proposing, the state is proposing to delay gas tax payments for approximately five months to counties, and that's going to put the roads at a, they're going to have to work at the auditor's office to determine where they're going to come up with the dollars until those monies are distributed in September of next year, excuse me, of this year. It's going to, ultimately, what the state budget has done to counties has, it's a continuation of the shell game. A couple of years ago, they implemented the triple flip, which changed the distribution of VLF revenues from monthly distributions to being distributed twice a year. Now they are proposing a number of deferrals in the health and human services arena of anywhere from one month to two to three months. This gas tax has been proposed to be delayed for five months. What we're seeing and what we're hearing is that they're having significant cash flow problems, and they're trying to push as many distributions into September so that they have money available to make their payments and to pay off their TRAN when it comes due in July and August. So the states in a world are hurt. And Mike, if you can go back? We added this slide at the last minute, so I apologize. Ultimately, the budget challenges for next year, this year's budget, we're going to, like Mike said, the departments have indicated they're going to come in at target, which means that our carryover fund balance will be strong once again. It will, we will once again have a certain amount of one-time monies that we're going to have to be very careful how we use them going forward. The growth in countywide revenues are probably still going to be somewhat strong next year, a little bit, based on, and that's based on the assessors' role that we're going to receive in late July, that really plays a big part in what we can do next year. But as of now, the budget challenges for next year are, as we have indicated in our slides, our Health and Human Services Agency has some funding issues, realignment's static. We're going to have to make some potential service reductions in that agency to meet their budget. We can consider one-time funds to get them through this year and next year if necessary. And our office will be coming back to this board before year-end with any potential changes that we'll need to make in early next fiscal year, if that's the direction we choose to go in. Another challenge that's going to come out of this budget is cash flows, like I indicated. We've, we, our revenue distribution has changed significantly in the last couple of years, and it's going to continue to change with the amount of deferrals in gas taxes and administration costs in the social services department and what have you. It really has put a burden and a challenge for our auditor's office relative to their TRAN borrowings each year. We already suffered somewhat from the capital markets problem with our recent action last week to pull in our GIC. That's an unprecedented action for this county to take, but is a reflection unfortunately of the environment that we are, that we are working in. Another area of concern is our development services area in the resource management agency. With the permit activity decreasing significantly, there's a shortfall in that area, and we're going to be working closely with the agency director to determine a bump in fees or perhaps other actions necessary to meet their budget targets. And last but not least is our structural fund balance. As we go, in order to prepare for what we expect to be a downturn in the economy, we're trying to lower our structural fund balance to make it easier to attain. It's a little high right now, and looking at some of the numbers, it's going to be, it's going to be a challenge to bring it down to where we need it to be for next year. And again, we'll be working more with this board as the year progresses, and we get a better picture of what that number's going to be. But what we, what we and this board has done has really prepared us for the future. We've, the board has budgeted conservative revenue estimates. We essentially are a little less than a year behind as far as budgeting growth and assessed value, which is important, and hopefully will provide some flexibility in addressing future downturns. We, unlike some of our neighbors, have a strong retirement system. We're funded at approximately 95%, and we have $100 million in deferred gains that will help absorb the impact of the reduction in value that we've seen since January 1st of this year. And our, we've also done a good job in not issuing pension obligation bonds. Our pension obligation debt is very low, and it's going to expire in 2012, '13, so this board's done a very good job in holding the line. Along those lines, we have a strong workers' comp fund. The board has conservatively funded the fund, and it's its fourth year in, its fourth year in existence. It's well-managed by our county council and Mr. Fromer. It's well-funded, and will provide some level of flexibility to address some of the shortfalls we're going to be seeing in the next couple of years. During this time period, and let's put things in perspective, the last three years, our assessed value has grown 34%. Over the prior seven years, it grew by 35%. So we've seen three years' worth of growth, similar to the prior seven years. On average of 5% the prior seven years, we've experienced approximately 11% assessed value growth. And during the period of the triple flip, where VLF revenues are tied to assessed value growth, it's really helped the county in a number of areas. One of the areas that it's helped is our information technology. This board has invested a significant amount of money to upgrade its infrastructure, to replace the four public safety programs, one of which we won't even mention, but it wasn't working very well. We're still in the process of installing those programs, but it's going to make those departments more efficient and work better going into the future. And last but not least, this board has built a fairly strong contingency and reserve, again, that will help us absorb future reductions, and with the economy tanking, so to speak, we should be in better shape than some of our neighbors in addressing these challenges. And I'll turn it back over to Mike.
In response to the governor's proposed budget, the legislative analyst officer, LAO, has taken a different approach. As you know, the governor has proposed cuts in terms of a 10% across-the-board reduction to all programs. The LAO has opted for a different approach by targeting certain programs, identifying certain programs, and bringing about the reductions. One of the things that we do see through the LAO's analysis is that they propose a complete phase-out of Williamson Act subventions. To us, that means a loss of about $3.5 million to the general fund. The governor proposes a 10% reduction, which would be $350,000, but with the LAO, there would be a proposed phase-out to that program. So we would have to find other dollars to replace that reduction in funding, or look to reductions from within. The next item is that the LAO proposes a realignment of programs, specifically the parole program to the local level. The LAO also focused on a new approach, the Proposition 98 funding, which results in a lower suspension of that funding as compared to the governor. And the LAO wants to attack an increase in revenues by looking at eliminating tax credits or tax exemptions. Another important feature which is consistent with the governor's proposed budget is that both the governor and the LAO do not propose a suspension of Prop 1A or Prop 42. All right, in terms of the budget schedule, let me just run through this briefly. It is proposed that on September 3, '08, the recommended budget would go to your board of supervisors. The final budget hearing materials would also go to your board, which would be the staff report and any other handouts. On September 16, the final budget hearings are proposed to begin and may proceed to September 26, consistent with state law. And then the personnel resolution and any changes would go to your board on October 8, '08. And finally, the budget book to the board of supervisors and the public, the final budget book, that is, would be produced on December 8. So that is the budget development schedule that we're proposing, and this is essentially equivalent to the schedule that has been adopted by your board for the previous fiscal. All right, in terms of requested actions before your board, number one, we request that you receive the mid-year budget report for fiscal year 2007, 2008. That was in your packet. Secondly, we ask that you approve a budget schedule and rollover budget for fiscal year 2008 and 2009. And let me just briefly deviate and say with regard to that, this approach will allow the departments to operate over the summer months without having to prepare a temporary budget for that time period. This process would also allow for re-budgeting of unexpended appropriations for individual capital projects that are not finished at year-end. And finally, the rollover process does not allow for additional positions or fixed asset purchases without explicit approval from the board of supervisors. And finally, to authorize the auditor controller with the concurrence of the county administrative officer to process any budget adjustments resulting from this report. Those are our three requests, and let me say in conclusion, Mr. Chairman, I would like to thank the departments and their staff for their tremendous help with regard to assembling this report. I'd also thank our CAO, Gene Rousseau, Kristin Bennett, Martin Meyer, Lynn Gregory, Dana Wild, and Paul Guerrero, the CAO office. They have all done tremendous work in order to get this report together for you. Thank you.
Questions, board?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say kudos to our staff for getting this out to us, and also, the information that we receive from various county folks is that we can be guardedly optimistic about our position, because we know that many of our sister counties are in much more serious condition than we are, and we don't wish them ill, but it, at least, I think what I see is it makes it more difficult for the state to impact county governments, because if county governments were all financially strong and the state was suffering desperately, then they would look, as they always have, to the counties to somehow fill that hole. But the fact that the counties are not, in general, in good financial shape, makes it that much more difficult for them to do that. We also have added protections of 1A and so forth that does not allow the state, as they used to in the past, to borrow money, which is actually theft, because they never had to pay it back. Now they don't have the luxury of doing that. So I think that's one of the reasons why you don't see the governor or the legislative analysts suspending, looking to suspend Prop 42 for that reason, because they know they have to pay it back. And frankly, the governor pointed out, we don't really have an income problem in the state of California, we have a spending problem. Our income is actually still going to be growing by about 1% at the state level. The problem is that the expectation was it had to be 5% or 6% in order to have a balanced budget. So I think we can be guardedly optimistic about our position here in Tulare County, and I'm thankful that we have been conservative in the past in terms of our budgeting process, and it's therefore sustainable. And I fear for some of the counties, Fresno County recently in the Fresno B article about their retirement system, many of these retirement systems are not sustainable, and it's going to be a very difficult thing for them to face in the coming days. So I, overall, I think we can be pleased at the report and where we're going. I didn't admit that there was nothing mentioned about layoffs or whatever. In fact, we're going to have an item coming up on our, later on in agenda today, that's actually adding positions to sheriff's office. So I think we can be pleased at where we're going, and we do need to be cautious, obviously, as we look forward, because it's going to be more difficult in the days ahead, but I think our conservatism is going to be helpful to us. So thank you, Gene.
Mr. Rashida?
When Supervisor Cox and I were elected to our positions, we were fortunate, the fact that the income was increasing, and we were able to provide more services and make some capital improvements. And we knew this day was coming, that it was everything cyclical, and that we would face this downturn in a short period of time, and that day is today. But thank you for the conservative spending practices of the board of supervisors, even before Supervisor Cox and I were elected. Tulare County is in a very good position to sustain what we have. And I'd like to thank all our staff that kept us informed and helped us steer the ship in the right line of being physically conservative. So I'd like to thank the staff and previous boards for helping us out, and our department heads, and our elected officers, who realize that everything is cyclical.
I would also like to thank CAO's office and all the hard work that went in there from all the people that work on that portion of the board. And I am very proud that we are fiscally sound, and that we are conservative, and we will continue to be that way. So many, we can't say that about our state government, and when you go to Sacramento, sometimes it's really frustrating to look at what's going on up there. But here in Tulare County, we can control the way we spend money, and I'm very proud to be on this board with the group of people that I serve with. Thank you.
I do have one quick comment, one quick question. The only question I came up with the whole thing was on the Williamson Act, the possible cut there, and I'm surprised Supervisor Worley didn't jump on this, because this has kind of been his baby, is we have updated contracts with some of our Williamson Act participants now. Will we be able to pass on a supplemental tax bill to those folks for the shortage path or held back from the state? Even with the new contracts? Well, you did this, and then you did this.
Even with the new contracts, probably not. You'll have to remember that the new contracts are very, 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 very few in number, that the bulk of the contracts were entered into way before we even started thinking about this. I'm thinking, yeah, and I'm thinking, we're thinking, and Mr. Finney can, or someone from RMA can correct me on this, I think we're thinking of something like 6,000 contracts, or the old contracts with like 900, 9,900 property owners, that kind of thing, with very few contracts entering into in the last three or four years. Even then, the new contracts only provide for an early cancellation on subvention monies. They don't, they don't provide for us to be able to adjust the tax rates under it.
Mr. Chairman, I'm glad you brought that up, and one of the things that crossed my mind, as I recall our council's legal investigation, is that we have, like the property owners, the right to send a notice of non-renewal, which is a ten-year process. But as I understand that, the moment we do that, we lose the subvention from the state of California. And it would seem to me that that would be something we should be looking to, our lobbyists and our fellow counties, to try to get that language adjusted so that we could notice non-renewal and still be able to receive the reduced amount at least, but start, still be able to receive those subventions, so we can get to the place at the end where the contracts are not renewed, and we would be able to be made whole by the taxation on that property. To me, that's a logical thing for us to try to do, and ought to be part of perhaps our platform, because right now, that's a big problem. If we give, we can look at this and say, wow, we need to get out of this business. The problem is, the minute we do that, it takes 10 years to get out of it, and you immediately lose the subvention. So it's a tremendous break on that, on that, trying to accomplish that. So it should be something we should look at, I believe.
Yeah, we've already been in discussions with CSAC on that very issue. We've been a little tentative to go down that road, to offer it up, so to speak, but discussions have been had already about how to prolong that effect, or at least scale it back over a period of time instead of all at once.
One other approach too, Gene, on that, is that there's been a failure, it seems to be, in the governor's office to recognize that when there are termination, this early termination of these contracts, the funds go directly to state of California. And I remember a couple of years ago, the last year that we had a full year's information, the subvention was $35 million back to the counties, and the state received $26 million from the early cancellation fees. Another approach would be to say, if you're going to take away the subvention, allow the counties to receive the early reduction fees, because, again, that would help to mitigate those losses. So there's a couple of avenues we should be, I think, exploring and trying to mitigate that impact on the county.
Supervisor Cox?
Yes.
I'd like to add a couple of comments on the Williamson Act. You know, we in the county are charged for protecting agricultural lands from development. This is one of the quickest ways to encourage development on agricultural lands, is by eliminating the Williamson Act. As a farmer... As a farmer myself, the elimination of the Williamson Act will triple my property taxes. So it's very difficult to convey to the state of California, if you want to protect agriculture. The Williamson Act has been very successful. And without the Williamson Act, I think we will see a lot more conversion and less emphasis on increasing density, because you'll have a lot more properties available than we've had in the past. So I strongly urge that this board and CSAC and everyone else out there needs to lobby for legislative relief, if this is the direction the state really wants to go in. And we will lobby for the legislative relief.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to respond, because I believe, Mr., my fellow colleague here on the board, Rashida makes a very good point, and that is, this is a very inexpensive program that has had a very positive impact on protecting act property. And so before we cave in, we really do need to try to make that point with the legislature, that this has been a very effective program, it's very cost-effective for the state for this little $35 million. And when you look at our state budget, it doesn't even amount to budget dust. That small amount of money has kept a lot of property in agriculture, will continue to do so, and to give that up, again, when you look at the actual difference of dollars of what the state is actually out, in case of one year, like $9 million, it's foolish to give up on this program. This has been a very, this is one of the few state government programs we can look at and say it's been very effective and cost-effective. So I agree with you, Mr. Rashida, that we ought to push that first, but I think in the event that we're going to lose that battle, we need to look at ways of trying to mitigate the impacts to this.
Mr. Chairman, well, two weeks ago, Supervisor Conway told me she was not going to be here, and that we're going to be talking about our mid-year budget. Oh, no, thanks a lot. You really dumped this on me. But, and then I read it, and my first thought was, well, this isn't the dark cloud I was expecting. This is, this is a cloud, but it's not a dark cloud. So I was very happy to read through the information that you provided, and the way I read it, it looks like a possible million-dollar shortfall for a 600 million-plus budget is not that bad. So, again, kudos to the, to the past Boards of Supervisors, department heads who've worked very hard to keep this county fiscally sound. With that, we will entertain a...
I move that we approve item three.
Moved by Mr. Rashida.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ennis. Although in favor, please cast your votes. And for those of you listening over the airwaves, passes with a unanimous vote, four votes, with Supervisor Conway being absent.
Mr. Chairman, I just have to, this issue about Tulare County relative to other counties reminds me of the story of two men that were out bear, out hunting, and a bear came upon them, and they were without ammunition. And so one of the persons took off his backpack and got his running shoes on and put them on, and the guy, the other fellow says, you cannot outrun that bear. She says, I don't have to outrun that bear, I just have to outrun you. I feel like we've got our running shoes on here in Tulare County, and that will be an advantage in the state, I believe.
I wondered when we were going to have the outrunning the bear story. We will now move to our consent calendar. Any items need to be pulled? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Although in favor, cast your vote. Passes four unanimous.
We opposed, can we still cast the vote?
No, and light's still on Supervisor. We will now move to our untimed items, item number 13, a request from the Sheriff's Department. This is the one we've all been waiting for.
Good morning. The State of the County addressed by Supervisor Conway, and I feel that I've been given the direction from the entire board to develop a comprehensive plan to do something about the gang problem here in Tulare County. Myself and Supervisor Cox have attended many meetings throughout the county to work on prevention and intervention. But I can tell you, none of these components work without the number-one component, which is suppression. We developed a magnet team, which has been working in the north end of Isaya, Cutler-Rosa area, Goshen, and Ivanhoe area. This team has been very successful, and what I hope to do is develop the same type of program in the south end of the county, working with the other chiefs, Porterville, Lindsay, as we have in the north end with Chief Cardon and Chief Christie. None of this works without a tremendous relationship and a working relationship with my fellow partners here in law enforcement. Our probation, parole, the district attorney's office, the other chiefs, highway patrol, everyone must play a major part in this. I have personally taken the leadership role to try to develop these units all over the county, working with the other chiefs and everybody else, and it seems to be very successful. We recently had gang bangers out of the Fresno area, street gang, go to Teapot Dome to a mini-mart there. They severely beat the clerk with baseball bats in the part of, part one crime of robbing the store. This level of violence cannot be tolerated in our county. As these larger organizations, LAPD, and I've traveled to LAPD to see what they're doing, I've been to Fresno to see what they're doing, as they push, we have to push back. We have to have a zero tolerance for the violence that's being committed in our county. We have to hammer and hammer hard. My goal is to go out into the county with this extra unit, the extra people we'll have, and hammer. We're not going to tolerate this, these people coming from out of our county and the gang bangers that are in this county. We're going to do everything we can to remove them from our communities. The prevention, the intervention will not work unless we in law enforcement provide the suppression. No one in the communities are safe unless we do our job. So we develop a comprehensive plan, as you said, the direction that you've given me, and I'll have Lieutenant Boudreau present it to you. I would also like to introduce my new gang czar, Lieutenant Cotton, just recently promoted. He was in charge of the gang unit, he was the sergeant in charge of it. He will now take over the responsibilities from Lieutenant Boudreau, and he will be in charge of the gangs, both north and south, and east and west. And I want to say that I really appreciate the interest that the board's taken, and Supervisor Cox has been providing the leadership for us to be able to do this.
Sheriff, thank you. On behalf of the Sheriff's Department, good morning to the Board of Supervisors, under the direction of Sheriff Whitman. We have put together a plan that we see that will be successful, as it has been in the north part of the county. So my role this morning is to provide you with a condensed version of what we have been doing, the problems that we had faced in the past, how we've dealt with it now, and how we hope to face it in the future. Under the direction of Sheriff Whitman, we've put together a comprehensive plan of action to reduce the gang violence in Tulare County. Currently, what we have in our GVSU unit, which stands for the Gang Violence Suppression Unit, the current staff has one sergeant, six detectives, and one grant-funded position, which is our gang prevention specialist. And that detective, what he does is respond to community meetings, schools and such, and provides presentations to the citizens of Tulare County. Just to give you an idea of some of the functions of the GVSU unit, there is a long list of items here that they are involved in, which really impacts the number of people that are assigned to that unit. We do probation and parole searches, we have high saturation details, surveillance, collection of evidence and intelligence, and community presentations. And that's just to name a few that's listed on the board there, just to give you an idea of some of the operations that the men and women do in the Gang Violence Suppression To give you some insight, as most of the board already knows, we have 120 gangs that we have identified county-wide. We have a split in the Tulare area separating our north and south parts of the county. We have 74 north county-identified gang members, or I'm sorry, gangs, and we have 46 in the southern part of the county. Gang members, this is going to become important later on in the presentation, but we have 4,600 or over 4,600 gang members that we've identified. This is important only that those are the ones we've identified. Those are the ones we've written down on paper and collected the information and validated them as gang members. That's not to include the numbers we have yet to identify and those that are evading and running from law enforcement to become identified. So this is, this is really an approximate number for us. We like to use the term urban terrorism. Terrorism is a strong word, however, we know that gangs lead their communities or lead their, the people in their community by fear and intimidation, and that's the epitome of the word terrorism. So there really is an urban terrorism out there. When you have graffiti written on a board, or on the side of a building, or on a fence, that's that gang member claiming that territory and letting the community know that they're involved there and trying to intimidate those people by fear. Many of the other things that gangs are involved in, which we all know, narcotics and weapon sales are closely tied to gang-related activity, not including the other long list that you see on the board there. One of the main goals for the Sheriff's Department is to try to reduce the violence. Homicides in Tulare County, as you see listed here in the year 2004, we had 10 murders, five of which were gang-related, 50%. And as you go on down the board, I think that we can show the significant impact that the gang resources have had in the year 2007, with seven homicides, only three of which being gang-related. Drive-by shootings, 2004, we had two, let me take that back, these are drive-by shootings resulting in homicide or resulting in death. Two in 2004, and as you run down the board, I think the significance of this showing in 2007, we like to show that the one drive-by shooting resulting in homicide is the direct relationship and significance to the gang involvement that we had towards investigations in 2007. As we all know, that this hits the papers, it hits the media, and directly affects the communities of Tulare County. One after one, we've had gang-related shootings and violence, which all the more stresses the impact that it has on our communities. The concentrated efforts that we have listed here for you, the enforcement efforts were conducted in response to increased levels of gang violence in the following areas. Goshen, Ivanhoe, Cutler-Rosa, and Isaya for the years 2006, 2007 had significant gang violence impacts resulting in death. The sheriff and chief cardinal of Isaya Police Department immediately recognized that there was a need to do more with the resources and economics that we had to face these, and they combined their efforts. I would like, as I mentioned before, the approximately 4,600 gang members listed before, I think this slide gives you the impact of what we deal with in that 120 gangs with six gang detectives. We average 773 gang members per detective. Our plan is to follow your recommendations on your strategic plan for the county. As you noted, number one of the strategic plan is to promote crime prevention by addressing contributors to crime, including substance abuse, domestic violence, mental health issues, truancy, illiteracy, and gang activity. This plan is being put together to meet the strategic plan that has been recommended by the county. Recommendations for the South County Gang Violence Suppression Unit. Additional resources required to address the gang issues county-wide. The sheriff, Sheriff Whitman, proposes creating a South County gang unit comprised of the following staff. One sergeant, six detectives, and two office assistants. This is just to the end of the current fiscal year, and we know that the numbers are important for you to look at, so we've provided this for you this morning. Redirected resources, we know that we have resources in the department that we can use with using existing funds to assist and aid in developing this program and developing the new unit down there under the direction of Sheriff Whitman. He is assigned, as I mentioned before, one full-time lieutenant exclusively for gang investigations. As I had it before, as many of us have sat and talked on different occasions, I had two different divisions that I was overseeing. The sheriff has directed lieutenant to exclusively see and oversee gang investigations. We have an investigator's aide that we have in one other position, we're going to redirect that and move it over to the existing gang unit. One of the resources that we have is our community-based officers. We'd like to, we are going to be designated them as CGSOs, which are Community Gang Suppression Officers. These Community Gang Suppression Officers will be cross-trained in gang intelligence, shifting their emphasis to gang investigations and suppression, not to exclude their current functions of meeting with the community, meeting with the schools, and dedicating those resources and that effect. But we'd like to supply them with additional training so that that can meet a wide spectrum of needs for the county. In our jails, we're going to designate 12 existing correctional deputies as gang specialists, collect information on incarcerated gang members, and share that information with jail staff and gang violence suppression detectives. This is, this is extremely significant in that a lot of our gang members who are in the jails, that's where a lot of the gangs were originated, and a lot of information is shared in between gang members within the jails, and we will use 12 correctional deputies to do cell searches, intervene, listen, and some intelligence gathering tools that we have within the jail facilities, and provide that information not only to our jail staff, but also to the gang violence suppression detectives that are in the field. Support staff. Oftentimes, the support staff gets overlooked, but it's very significant that we have these personnel. Right now, what we have is the gang detectives spend a significant amount of time in the office, doing a lot of what would be done by an investigator aide or office assistants, providing them more opportunity and more time to be in the field. The investigator aide, as I mentioned before, we have that existing position, and we will move them over into the gang unit. The two office assistants, this will allow detectives to work in the field instead of doing the office work, such as data entry. This can be performed by the office assistants. Resources that'll be available to us, and I'll go into a few more of these down the line, but we have the magnet unit, the resources of the community gang suppression officers, that's going to provide a tremendous resource to us. And as you look down the line there, we have the code compliance and the housing authority. And those are significant because the sheriff has asked that we look outside the box in efforts to try and reduce some of the gang activity that are in our communities, not only just the suppression side of it, which is extremely important and needs to take place, but what other ideas can we come up with to try and combat these issues? Like to go into the magnet unit just for a moment. The magnet unit is the multi-agency gang enforcement team. As I mentioned before, the sheriff and chief cardinal had gotten together and recognized the issues that we were having in the communities of Isaya, Goshen, and such. And we've combined these agencies, and the significance of this is having everyone under one roof, having everyone, having a face-to-face and sharing intelligence and information with each other, which has proven to be such a significant impact for the northern part of the county. As the sheriff had mentioned, our desire is to put together a South Magnet Team, which is a multi-agency gang enforcement team. We are in the baby stages of this, or the baby steps of this, however, we are moving forward. We have the support of the agencies that are listed on the board here today. We know that these communities have significant issues, and the chiefs and leaders of these departments recognize this and are coming on board to put together a South Magnet Team, which is a significant step forward. Asset forfeiture, as I had mentioned before, the sheriff has asked us to look outside the box. How can we impact these gangs? We have sent a gang detective to asset forfeiture school. How do you impact the gangs? We take your money from them. We refer to them as organized crime groups, and if you can take the money from them and impact them significantly in their financial and economic status of that gang, the assets of that gang, removing those is the significant impact that I discussed. Also, the monies that are seized from that, as we do in drug investigations and gang investigations, those monies should be used back to support the gang units in the future. Parent accountability. Once again, we're in the baby steps of this, we're speaking with the court system, we're hoping... We're hoping that, in dealing with the courts and probation, that parents that turn the other cheek and really don't take accountability and responsibility for things that are occurring with their children, there's a difference between a parent who just does not know, and those are not the ones that we're trying to target here. There is a difference between those gang member parents who are raising gang member children. We would like to bring accountability to those parents, and in working with the courts and probation, we're hoping to move forward with resources that'll provide accountability within the court system to those parents. Once again, we don't have anything set in stone, but that is thinking outside the box and moving in a direction that we can get support from the courts and probation. Code compliance. This is another issue. We know that the vandalism and such out there in the communities, we would have broken down buildings where they tag and mark things up. What we'd like to do is work with code compliance to have those condemned buildings removed, and the property owners that own those buildings show some accountability in that regard as well. We're in the very beginning stages of this. Yes?
Officer, you know, that strikes me also that we could talk a little bit about property owner accountability, because if you look at Self-Health, for instance, the way they operate their apartment complexes, you don't see this problem.
Correct.
So property owners who are paying attention to the people they rent to and how they not only maintain their property, but the activities that are going on there can play a big role in this, because we need, they need to not be turning their face the other way either, and enabling these people to continue to do the kind of things they're doing out of the places that they're renting.
And I absolutely agree. The community needs to become accountable and take responsibility, and I completely... Moving on with the housing authority. We've met with the housing authority a couple of times. We know that some of their current policy and procedures that they have in place for allowing people to receive the finances under the housing authority requires that they not maintain a house for narcotic sales, and also anyone who has been convicted of any type of sex crimes. Those become issues listed on the sheet when they sign for the monies received in the housing authority. Well, we also thought that if we have gang members who are hanging out in areas where there is good, hard-working people in the community, but yet we have a group of ten, five gang members hanging out in an area that they should not be, that maybe there's something on those forms that we could list restricting that. And if those types of activity is in the community in these housing areas, that be regulated. And so we're in the beginning stages of that, working with the housing authority to see the legalities of what we could imply in the up-and-coming forms for the future. This plan of action, we think that the benefits of it is suppressing the gang activity. This is also meeting the demands for service in our communities. It promotes the collaboration in working together as a community of law enforcement as well as with the community as a whole. It definitely follows the strategic plan that was put in place by the county, and we have shown through the numbers that I've listed that it does reduce gang violence and activity within the communities. The sheriff's overall vision is to have one lieutenant who oversees both the north and south gang units with two sergeants, one in the north and one in the south, with twelve gang detectives. Once again, six in the north and six in the south. Will remain with the gang prevention specialist who currently travels throughout the county, and then the addition of the investigator aide and office assistants, which are vital in the amount of paperwork that's generated with gang investigations.
Comment there is that you, according to the data that you have, you have significantly more gang activity numbers in terms of the numbers of gangs, numbers of active gang members in the north than you have in the south. I hope there's a certain fluidity here in terms of not just having a hard line, "Well, I only work the north half, I only work the south half," that they can be assigned as needed, so that if the need is greater in a particular place, that can be happening. I hate to see us creating hard lines on the sand that would indicate I don't go north of this line or south of this line.
And I agree with you, and I think there's two rules that we need to look at here. One is we show significantly less numbers in the South County, but that may very well be in part to the fact that we don't have the resources there to identify those gangs that are down there. That number may increase with the increased personnel that are down there. Also, as you pointed out, Mr. Worley, I agree that, you know, any time in law enforcement that we have to move and adjust as we go to send the resources to the best impact in that community, that's what we'll do. However, the emphasis would be that we do need to recognize and identify those gangs and gang members that are in the South County that have gone, you know, with less attention. However, I would probably say that those numbers will increase, but to answer your question, yes, we will as law enforcement move and flow as we need with the impact to the community. And with that, we just end it with the gang information hotline that we have in place. We hand out our 1-888-N-GANG cards everywhere we can, both in English and in Spanish, and with a collaboration of all that I've listed. I'll end and open it up for questions. Any questions?
Well, the only thing that I would like to say is I think that the businesses and the people and the communities need to keep the right colored paint for their business. Don't paint tan on gray. I mean, that looks worse, that looks like Beirut. I mean, we need to get these businesses together, we need to get people together, have the pride. When somebody graffitis your place, paint over it, where it doesn't look like it was ever there. I mean, I got graffiti this weekend right in front of my house, right on my sidewalk. I went out, took care of it. But we need to have more pride in our communities, and if we develop that pride, then they'll want to go out and keep their communities looking good and cover this graffiti up. That's all I had to say.
You're absolutely right, and it's a major blight on our community. We do have a program within the sheriff's office. If you call us, we'll go out and paint over it with volunteers. Having said that, I want to thank the board for allowing me to be here today, and I want to thank Supervisor Cox especially publicly for the hard work he's put into this, into the gangs in this county, and coming out, riding with our deputies, seeing firsthand what's going on out there, the level of violence and the risk that our law enforcement officers take on a nightly basis, daily basis, you know, risking their lives out there. We all know that what can happen in this community, but thank you very much Supervisor Cox, and I want to thank the board for their cooperation too. If we've left anything out, we'll continue to work on this. It is a process, and we'll continue to the best we can with the support of the board, and thank you too, Gene.
Supervisor Sheehan?
Well, I want to thank the sheriff's department, the sheriff and the staff for being prepared to step forward to move to the South Valley. I think it's probably underestimated, undercounted right now as to how many people we have involved in gangs, because I'm not sure the effort's been coordinated for a long enough period of time to gather this information. I met with three police chiefs last week, met with Dinuba, Farmersville, and Lindsay, and they're all excited about the direction with the leadership the sheriff's department is taking in this gang suppression. This amount of money that we're approving today is a small amount of money compared to what a year-round program is, is what we're going to obligate ourselves to fund in the future. But I think overall, that is our number-one priority in Tulare County as a board of supervisors, is public safety. And I think it's worth, I'm sure it's worth every penny of investment that we put into it today versus trying to catch up on an issue eighteen months from today. So I really appreciate the initiative that your office, your department, has taken, and be very glad to support your endeavors.
I did have, and that was sort of leading up to a question Mr. Sheehan pointed out, and that was the funding of this. This is strictly coming out of general fund dollars for this time. I noticed in the paper this morning that there were some gang suppression funds being made available to various cities and counties. I noticed Tulare was not among them. I think Kern was one of those. The city of Visaya was listed as receiving a rather significant grant also.
It was a CalGrip, and that was a joint effort. It wasn't...
We also got a grant, working with other agencies, to start a program in our organization where we can hire six at-risk youth. We just received a notification this morning. So we've been writing those grants too, and we can hire six at-risk students in our community to be cadets, and then we can, hopefully, our goal is to promote them up to the ranks.
Good. Two points here I wanted to make just finally is that, one is this is an example of why we've spent a lot of time in Washington, D.C., because almost exactly the amount of money we're talking about spending here just to end this fiscal year is what we spend out of our general fund dollars fighting eradication efforts in national forests, in public lands. And one of the things we've been telling people in Washington, D.C. is that we cannot continue to justify expenditures of Tulare County dollars to fight those battles on those public lands when we need the resources down in the valley. And this is an example, this is kind of a classic example of that. And I forgot what the other thing I was going to say, other than the fact I think this is a great program, and we do need to be mindful, I appreciate Mr. Sheehan's comments, but it still is a, there still is a financial impact. We still, oh, I know what it was. As we grow as a county, numerically, in the past, we have used our additional revenues that come from that growth, basically, in the most part, to sort of pay for salaries and benefits of our employees. But there comes a time when you have to expand. You can't double the population in the unincorporated parts of the county and have the same number of police officers out there patrolling. It just does not work, and we have an obligation as a county to expand where that's absolutely critical that we do that, and I see this as being an example of that. This is needed. You know, we may be having success in the north, but I can tell you there's still major problems up there. I'm getting tired of being burgled and robbed, and my neighbors are being robbed, and, you know, I just had a guy, my next-door neighbor, had about six cows, and they've been taken. So, I mean, the problems are rampant out there, and people are getting sick and tired of it. So if we don't do it, there's going to be vigilanteism out there. I'm honest. I mean, people are really, they're up to here with it, because it doesn't, you know, it's one thing you get hit one time, then you get hit again and again and again, and I've got a guy that I hesitate to call, because I know what he's going to say. He's got, you know, I live in my house, and I get hit, but you can imagine if you're an absentee owner, you know, and you don't live at your place of business, these folks are just being killed, and we have got to get a handle on this. It's just, there's just no two buts about it. We've got to get it done. So I appreciate your stepping up, Sheriff, and, you know, it all works together. You know, some of these guys are out there burglarizing because it's drugs. I mean, that's a big part of us, drugs, but we know drugs are intimately tied into gangs. So, you know, as you go after the gangs, you're going after the enablers and the people that are some big supporters of the drug trafficking. So it all works together, and I know that's the goal, is to get a handle on this crime problem, but it's real, so...
Sheriff, thank you for bringing this forward. I was hoping to see this in January, as you know, but it's here, and I also will support it. I don't think I need to say anything else.
I have one last thing. I also like to thank Lieutenant Bedrow, because I know how busy he's been working on this issue and many others. So thank you very much.
A move approval, Mr. Sheehan.
Moved by Supervisor Worley.
Thank you.
Sec by Mr. Ennis. Please cast your vote. Passage unanimous, four votes. Thank you very much, Sheriff, and congratulations. This means tomorrow we've got six more sheriffs in cars.
These are age-old guys, though, they're trying to find six more.
See you, Lindsay.
Okay, we'll now move to item number fourteen, a presentation by our library advisory board.
Good morning, Board, CAO, County Council. The Tulare County Library Advisory Board has been in existence for about thirty years now, and they do an annual report to your board, and this year they wanted to present some of the highlights to your board, because they don't get to see all that often. So without further ado, I'd like to turn the podium over to Bill Parker, who is the chairman of the Tulare County Library Advisory Board.
Thank you, Brian. Oh, if you'll bear with me, we'll get through this somehow. I'll be pretty brief on this, and the advisory board, we're providing this one-year annual report through January through December '07. And this is to inform supervisors of the public library activities, successes, and the goals for the coming year. And we meet the fourth Thursday of each month, and the past year, we've had very few meetings. Didn't have a quorum most of the time.
Sir, could you speak, stand closer to the mic?
Oh, okay. And the advisory board was established by a resolution of the Board of Supervisors on September the sixteenth, nineteen eighty. So we advise and make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors regarding all phases of the services in operation. So we provide the board with periodic reports on the state of the library, and we try to inform ourselves regarding the views of the general public with respect to the library system, and to consider these views to the extent possible. And we work real close with the county library. The board includes twenty members, so at the present time, we have ten on the roster, but only eight active on this, and sometimes it's hard to get a quorum. So it does create logistical challenges, and it requires six to have a regular meeting. Then recently, we created a flyer to assist with filling the Library Advisory Board vacancies. Let's see, number-two sheet here gives you a full breakdown of our membership and the vacant positions. So we definitely need more members on board, so we can have more and better meetings and keep better informed. So our number-one goal here is to fill membership vacancies, and that would help tremendously. And number-two is tour the libraries within Tulare County, usually about half each year. Then we want to hold meetings at the other county libraries. And then we want to acknowledge Brian Lewis, the county librarian, and his staff for their dedication to providing quality and meaningful services. We appreciate Mr. Lewis's leadership and unwavering commitment to providing quality services in a way that meets the needs of Tulare County and communities. So that was brave. I hope you got a little out of it, and thank you. And thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, move to receive the representation of the advisory board.
Moved by Supervisor Worley, seconded by Mr. Sheehan. Placed your votes. Did you want to say something else?
I just was here in case you had questions.
It passes four-oh. No questions, but if you could provide us with a list of vacancies, and I would imagine there's vacancies throughout each supervisory district, that we might look at to fill those positions?
We'll have that tomorrow, Supervisor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number fifteen, Resource Management Agency.
Good morning, Board, CAO, Ms. Roberts, our clerk Baldwin. We are pleased to be before you this morning to talk a little bit about Prop 1B. If you recall, in November 2006, the Prop 1B was passed, and that provided about $2 billion for transportation purposes. about $2 billion for transportation purposes. Out of the $2 billion, state has given $950 million to cities and counties. Out of the $950 million, $550 million goes to cities, $400 million to counties. The $400 million for the counties, we are receiving about 7.8 million. And in order for us to receive this money, we need to have a plan that is approved by our Board. That's why we're before you. And I'm pleased to bring Mr. John Brew, so he can walk you through some of the plans we have, and get any comments you may have.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, CAO. My name is John Brew, Assistant Director of Transportation with RMA. We've been waiting since November two thousand and six for this funding to become available. And with this funding, Tulare County's allocation is $7,885,432 for this fiscal year. This funding must be spent by June thirtieth of two thousand and eleven. As Henry said, in accordance with the Prop 1B directives, the state requests the county approve a plan indicating how the funds will be spent to the Department of Finance. Staff proposal is to use all the Prop 1B funding for contract asphalt overlay on twelve miles of major roads and overpasses. However, if the state delay payments of our gas tax funds for five months, as now being proposed, we would use up forty-two percent of the Prop 1B funding for operation and general maintenance. And we will also be reducing the number of miles of overlay from this funding. We hope the state will pay us back next five months. This will allow us to complete the balance of the projects. I'll have a slide to show you of the listing of projects. We consider using all the Prop 1B funding to do resurfacing by contract at ten of these locations, six project location at various supervisory district, and four bridge approaches. We prefer not to be bound to these projects to allow us some flexibility to add or delete This is a map of the various location of the project that we're proposing to do. Procedurally, we also request that your Board approve the necessary budget adjustment to recognize the increase of revenues and provide expenses for these funds. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll take any questions.
Any questions?
Looks like the chairman's making out like a bandit here. I don't mean this chairman, I mean the, I mean District Two chairman, it looks like a lot of miles there.
It's just a going-away press.
Joe, I know that there's a lot of thought goes into the projects that you're gonna do, and I know we're all sensitive to our districts, and Phil leaned over and said, "I don't see District Three on there," but, I mean, you're all cities, so I wouldn't expect that. But District Five and Four, kinda looking for ours as well, and...
We try to distribute all the projects, so that every supervisor also sees some work in it with this Prop 1B.
I understand that, and I, it's just, you know, amazing to think that 11.79 miles costing $7 million, you know, it's just unbelievable, the cost of doing this work. But we're grateful for what we have, and it'll be well-spent, and I know there are people that will be pleased that we're not adding to our staff and buying equipment. We're gonna be contracting out, so we get the biggest bang for the buck, and appreciate what you guys are doing, and just move forward. This, it all kinda works together. We have this pot of funds, and we have our regular allocation, and we've got, now we've got our own initiative funds, and so, you know, it's much brighter than it was a few years ago. Still got a long ways to go, but we're, at least we're moving in the right direction, so, thanks.
With your approval on this, we should get the money next month, the whole lump sum.
Good. I'd like to put a plug in for road, and this is between, old sixty-five, between Porterville and Strathmore. What's the number?
Orange Belt Drive.
Yeah, Orange Belt Drive.
Orange Belt Drive.
I mean, we have a lot of traffic on that highway, and it's getting really, really rough.
Well, just be sure it comes out of District One someplace.
I'm speaking up for District Five.
Oh, for District, okay.
We have looked at the Orange Belt Drive, and has a project included on the Measure R, on that section of it. We're not gonna be able to do all of it, but at least a portion of it.
Well, I'd like to thank you guys, though, because when I do have a trouble spot, if somebody calls me with a problem with a road or something, you guys have been able to come through and, and take care of it, and I sure appreciate that.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chair, Mr. Brew already mentioned that we probably will have some flexibility in, in this one, so if we need to adjust something in the next three years, we can do that. I also wanna here to thank Mr. Brew and his staff, really been very, very creative in the past two, three years, to come up with ways to reduce the cost and increase the number of roads that we have. We are really doing more roads today than we were doing four, five years ago, despite 200, 250 percent cost increase, so really kudos to all of them.
Anything else? Entertain a motion, then.
So, move.
Motion by Sheed, seconded by Ines. Cast your vote. Passes four.
Thank you.
Affirmative. Thank you.
Almost looks like a Bill Thomas deal.
Okay, we'll move, with that, we'll move to item sixteen, also a presentation from Resource Management Agency.
Good morning again, Board, Henry Hash, Resource Management Agency. Also pleased to be here before you about this item. I think this is a very good item. If you recall, you approved two projects to be done by RMA, energy efficiency projects, and the projects have been completed, Chairman Cox, I would say, on time and on budget. But the result really has been considerable savings for the county. These projects, if I just remember barely, altogether about $19 million. Reality did not cost the county any money, because the money that was borrowed was being paid out of the reduction of our utility cost. I don't wanna get into detail, and I would like to introduce Mr. Hal Syper, who has done a great job, and his staff, to monitor all of this, to make sure that we accomplish the kind of results we expected. In fact, we have done that. Mr. Syper.
Thank you, Mr. Hash. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, thank you for, my name is Hal Syper, I'm with Resource Management Agency. I wanna thank you for the opportunity to explain what we are doing to reduce energy consumption here in Tulare County. As, as Mr. Hash alluded to, we, the county has done two projects. One back in, whoops, went the wrong way. One back in two thousand and two, a county-wide energy project, which involved sixty-six facilities, and it was completed, which is commonly referred to as Invensis. In two thousand and seven, your Board approved an energy project at Bob Wiley Detention Facility, along with adult pretrial, and some parts of the Juvenile Justice Project with Chevron, and that's what it's commonly known as. I wanna talk a little bit about consumption and our billing, our billing cycles. We predominantly purchase most of our power through Southern California Edison, and approximately forty percent of the county's utility budget is expanded by October, during the hottest months of the summer. And during that time period, we're, actually, we're all, on this all year long, but we're on a time-of-use rate structure, which means that we have a meter that is read every fifteen minutes in our larger facilities. And you can see what I've, what we've detailed here is the time periods from which we are billed from. Each time period has multiple rate structures, depending on the consumption levels that you're on. What I wanted to point out is the noon to six PPM time is the on-peak, or it's the highest rate charged to us in county facilities. So, that's, that's just one of the things I wanted to point out, a little information on that. And I mentioned that, I believe also that there are plans at the PUC, that they're constantly discussing, that maybe rolling these type of metering devices out to homeowners too as well. What I wanted to take a look at real quick and show you a little bit was the Civic Center. Soon as I figure out which, what years, how to push these buttons right. In two thousand, two thousand and one is the, is the comparison year that we use for the Invensis project. In fiscal year two thousand, two thousand and one, electricity consumption here at the Civic Center was seven point, almost eight million kilowatt-hours, at an average cost of nine point five cents per cost per kilowatt, and that equated to $759,000. That nine point five cents, we actually have a twenty-four-hour facility that does buy power in the off-peak hours with the main jail here at this particular facility. So, that's what's lowered the cost, the average cost per hour. In fiscal year oh seven, oh eight, we've projected electricity consumption at five point two million, just a little bit, over five point two million kilowatt-hours, at an average cost of fourteen point eight cents per kilowatt-hour, or total cost of 772,000. Looking at the cost avoidance on almost two point eight million kilowatts is 409,000. And this doesn't take into consideration any changes in the operation or in the facilities that have happened, or how they've been staffed. Couple of big significant changes that we're aware of that's happened here on this campus is the west wing of the courthouse now basically runs seven days a week. As additional staff has been brought on and things have happened, the seventh, like I said, the west wing is operating seven days a week, so that means the HVAC and the lights are on seven days a week on that, on that end. Number of new employees, again, it impacts consumption with lighting, heating, equipment, computers, and so on and so forth. If I can look at the Government Plaza in two thousand, two thousand and one, again, Invensis comparison year, in two thousand, two thousand and one, electricity consumption was a little over three million kilowatt-hours, at an average price of 12.9 cents, again, 393,000. In two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, projected electricity consumption is 2.6 million kilowatt-hours, at 15.4 cents average kilowatt-hour, or 402,000. Again, the cost avoidance on 441,000 kilowatt-hours is 68,000. Significant changes have happened in the Government Plaza. Back in two thousand, two thousand and one, quite a bit of it was vacant. A lot of the facility on the east end, on the lower floor, was vacant. We've moved, the IT has moved in a, has moved in the IT center where they run the air conditioners 24/7. The print shop has moved out there, relocated out there, and it's also operating on a, on a two-shift basis. So, again, even though we've had increased demands for consumption, we still have reduced significantly our kilowatt-hours utilization. I'll take a quick look at the Bob Wiley Detention Facility. The Bob Wiley Detention Facility, again, this project out here is the Chevron project. It's in the final stages and should be done sometime, hopefully in June. And what this project has done is basically, it has created a campus. We had adult pretrial, and we had Bob Wiley Detention Facility. They were on their own separate meters. They've been combined into one. And the combined utilization for two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, the consumption was four, almost 4.9 million kilowatts, at an average cost of 13.7 cents, 671,000, you can see there. In two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, electricity consumption is projected to be at 3.3 million kilowatt-hours, at 14.7 cents, or 491,000, 495,000. Again, cost avoidance on one and a half million kilowatt-hours is 225,000.
Before you leave there now, I had a question about that, Hal. Did we not go to a, go off of the, I mean, we were on the grid, obviously, but then we went to a cogeneration facility?
Yes, we're, cogeneration facility's installed, and it is still being...
So, that's not really operational yet?
It's not fully operational.
Because that will change the price per kilowatt, I would think.
It will drive the price per kilowatt-hour down.
Right, okay, thanks.
And we have seen some savings out there, as we've said, because it's been, it's been in test phase, it's been up and down, and so on and so forth. So, we have, and then also, by combining the two, the two facilities into one meter, we were also able to buy a larger feed of power from Edison, which is also sold to us at a cheaper price per kilowatt.
PG&E if they're at Edison?
We are in Southern California Edison. Juvenile Justice across the street is at PG&E. And if I look at the juvenile justice comparison, the two thousand, again, looking at fiscal year two thousand, two thousand and one, we're at four point, almost 4.5 million kilowatt-hours, at nine cents per average kilowatt, 403,000. In two thousand and seven, the consumption is down to 3.8 million, at 13.5 cents, again, for a total cost of 511. The cost avoidance is about 93,000. And again, this doesn't take into any consideration the expansion in the operation. Also, last summer, again, with the summer months being the most critical months in utility consumption, we actually had some equipment that was down for most of the summer, so actually, this does not reflect, I believe, that what we're gonna see this summer, because the equipment has been repaired. We had some communication issues, so that way, we couldn't operate our equipment in the right sequences. So, if I look at, if I look at where we're, where we're at right now, when the two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight utility budget was prepared, the estimating savings from the cogeneration project was, was understated, or underestimated by 200,000. And then, over the past eighteen months, county maintenance staff has been fine-tuning energy savings equipment. We've been working on making sure that all of our equipment is operating in peak, peak periods and working in the right times. Because what we're trying to do is trying to buy more of our power in the off-peak period. Thus, the thermal energy storage tanks that you see here at the courthouse, at the juvenile justice, and then also over at the Government Plaza, we're actually running our air conditioning units at night, by chilling the water at night, where we can buy the power at the cheapest time. What this, and what this has done is it's rejected, it's resulted in a projected 600,000 savings in this year's utility budget, in fiscal year two thousand and seven, eight, and the ability to lower the utility budget to the departments for next fiscal year. And that pretty much concludes my, my presentation. I did, I did wanna recognize a few folks. Lloyd Finley, our facilities manager, who's been instrumental in, in this project. Steve Baker, our maintenance supervisor here at, at the Civic Center. Mike Sheets, we have a building systems technician classification. These folks are responsible for making sure that energy savings equipment is operating in a timely manner and in an efficient manner. Then also, Gail Henry, our utility coordinator. And without this team, it wouldn't be possible to achieve these types of results. With that, I'll take any questions or comments.
Great. Questions, Board? Comments?
Just one quick comment, and I've talked way too much today, but I know, the former CNN, I visited the Cali Gate Building up in Sacramento. This, this process never ends. I mean, you can continually refine, and refine, and refine, and generally, it's well worth the effort to do that, because there are always more, and you, when you look at the, whenever we can save on those top-dollar kilowatts, I mean, everyone you're saving is not the bottom, it's the top, in terms of expense. So, it's very cost-effective. And I did have this one question. Are we meeting the target, then, that we had met with Invensis, as far as paying back the bonds with the savings? Are we having any problems meeting those?
That's always been a question that I've, that I've been asked several times, and in my opinion, we are.
Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you.
I'm looking for that 600,000 check, Hal.
It'll be in next year's budget.
Avoidance is not quite the same as a good estimate.
Okay, entertain a motion, then.
Moved to approve the report.
Moved by Mr. Ines.
Second.
Second, Mr. Worley. Please cast your vote. Passes four votes to the positive. Thank you very much. We will now move to public comment period. Is there anybody here that would like to speak during the public comment period? Seeing none, we will move to Board of Supervisor Matters. Mr. Ines, we'll start at you and work your way down the table.
Well, just an update on the courthouse in Porterville. I had a meeting with some folks last week, and things seem to be moving along, hopefully getting the fairgrounds moved, and property, and having the state come in and buy the property, so that they can go forward with the courthouse. It's looking good.
Good. Mr. Sheed.
Well, I had the pleasure to go to Mike Milhouse's retirement this Saturday, and witness Don Landers getting his retirement plaque today, and then shortly, we'll have Mr. Finney will be retiring. And we all share a common thread, and that is, I went to school with every one of them, and...
Was that an announcement?
The only one, the only one older than me is Finney that's retired. So, I'd like to congratulate them on their long... I'd like to congratulate them on their long career with the counties, so.
Great. Mr. Worley.
Just to say that, I would be saying this to Ms. Conway if she were here today because I will be in her district this evening, speaking to the Tulare County, I mean, to the Tulare City Council about air quality matters, so just to report to them about the efforts by the district to sort of change the view of the summer program when they have the, normally they give the notices the day in advance of what they anticipate the next day's going to be like. And the problem with that is so often people cannot really respond to it. They go, "Oh, it's a bad air day." And then they just, they don't really think through, well, what are some of the things I can do to mitigate that? And the idea here is to sort of focus on a week in advance so that you could have plans in place, you know, work from home, commute less, catch a ride with somebody else. But if you don't think about these things in advance, you really aren't going to be able to take advantage of them. So, I think it's a good effort to try to sort of redirect the attention to that and again, bringing back self-responsibility, things that we can do to help improve our air quality. So, I'll be speaking to the, the side from our, the Executive Officer of the Air District will be there and I will also be there briefly.
Great. Two quick things. Next Wednesday up in Cutler Arosi will be the Cutler Arosi Step Up Gang Summit from five to nine PM. Our final planning session will be this Friday. Come together very nicely. This evening, we meet in Ivanhoe with the Ivanhoe Lions Club, folks and community and school leaders from there and possibly Woodlake to talk about a possible summit for that area of the county.
Could you add Farmersville?
We will. It's our intention to encourage those folks to add Woodlake and Farmersville to their event. And with that, County Council, I believe we do have need for a closed session.
Yes, we do. We have need for items A through D on the closed session agenda. Item E, we do not need any longer and there will be no reports out.
And I will take Supervisor Conway's gavel and we will adjourn to closed session.